Okay, all right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to the recess meeting of Tuesday, April the 16th, 2019, with Board of Alderman and the City of Starkville. We'll call this meeting to order. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We will have a moment of, I'm sorry, an invocation by Pastor Sam Bonner from the New Prairie Grove Church, and then a moment of silence, so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bonner.
That's great. Father, thank you, Father. Father, thank you, Father, for meeting. We ask, Father, that you, as a person of being and all of the decisions and all the things that you've done, like your word, Jesus, and all things that you've done, these ones can add to all. We thank you, Father, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being here. Our first order of business will be approval of the official agenda, including consented items. I do have an item to add to the agenda. We have an executive session item for personnel, so if we could add that to the agenda. And then I will see if anyone else has any other changes. The agenda has been adjusted to reflect an additional item, and I will go ahead and say, if you will notice, that we are missing Alderman Miller. He has, as of yesterday, he resigned. Wanted to say how much we appreciated his service. He is going to take a job down in Ocean Springs, where his family is from, and we wish him the very best. He's been a wonderful Alderman for the past two years for us, and he will be missed. But that's part of what our business tonight will be, will be calling for that special election. So with that, do I have any changes to either the consent agenda or the agenda? Vice Mayor Perkins, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items I want to remove from consent. Item, Roman number 10B, 10B on board business, item B. If you remove that from the consent agenda, please.
Okay, remove from consent, okay.
Okay, the last item, and I'm going to want this department head, I don't need for Mr. Kemp to come down, not for me, but I need for the next item that, I need this department head to come down at this particular time to give some justification under item I for parks, number two. I just need to get some justification, some understanding about that man a little bit further than what I got in the package, Mayor.
Okay, and you're wanting him to do that now, at this point in time?
No, we can just wait.
Oh, when, okay.
When the appropriate time arrives.
Got it, okay, so we remove I two from consent.
Mayor, one last thing, if I have the floor. As to this board business under item A for the calling election, do you have a date on that while we're there?
Yes, sir, I would propose a date for you. After many calculations of how we best might have both elections at the same time, May the 30th.
For both elections?
For both elections. The election for Alderman Miller's seat, the late, last day we can do it is May the 31st. May the 30th is a Thursday, and hopefully that would be a good day for both elections so we aren't confusing with the resolution and the referendum, so.
Mayor, may I recognize very briefly?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Attorney, let me just kind of dialogue, a little legal talk here. I'm going to ask the mayor to place both those matters on consent. Just want to dialogue with you on this minute. As I understand the law, Attorney, on the special election for the vacancy for Ward Five and the statute, I think it's 23-15-857.
Correct.
And we have to declare that vacancy tonight, which is the first meeting following the declaration of the vacancy.
Correct.
And so the statutes, I understand, it gives us, we have to set that election for at least 30 days out and not more than 45.
Correct.
So therefore, we have to set it. The mayor mentioned that date will be within that 45-day timeframe. And I read the order, rather, as required by statute, and that'll be by electronic voting for that vacancy for Ward Five. And we also can have the election for the 1% meet that notice publication issue of outline in your correspondence, so that could save the taxpayers a lot of expense, which is the mayor. I want to commend the mayor for that. Thank you, Mayor, for that. But just to make sure that was the correct understanding I had. So Mayor, with that being said, and the affirmation from the city attorney, could we just put both of those matters, if there are no objections, on consent agenda, Mayor?
I would be delighted. Do I have any objection to both?
I've got a question.
Alderman Carver, I saw your hand first.
Not so much an objection, but whatever.
Separate items. You're saying both?
Yes.
Instead of date under the other items, since they are separate.
Right, so we had the same, the same date for both items, yes, sir.
No problem.
Alderman Carver, was that your question?
No, I was going to say, a question posed to me, does every polling place has to be open?
Yes. Citywide, 1%. We will have all the regular polling places open. We don't want any confusion associated with the election, so all polling places will be open. Ward Five will be voting on two items instead of just one. But yes, all the polling places will be open.
Thanks.
Alderman Sistrunk, I see your hand.
Could you explain to people what the qualifying period is, in case there's somebody who wants to run for that vacant Alderman position?
Okay, I'm going to read what our city clerk has provided to us. It's in front of all the board members there, so that, in fact, I'll just read the whole thing. To qualify to run for Alderman for Ward Five, the candidate must obtain a petition from the city clerk or Secretary of State website and gather 50 signatures from qualified voters in Ward Five. Petition may be submitted anytime from April the 17th until 5:00 PM Wednesday, May the 8th of 2019, to the city clerk. The signatures will be verified by the city clerk and the election commissioners. Applications for absentee ballots may be mailed, or, I'm sorry, to be mailed, once ballots are available, may be requested after 8:00 AM April the 18th of 2019. The last day to register to vote is 5:00 PM Tuesday, April the 30th, for this May 30th election. And we would recommend registering at the city clerk's office so that those registrations can go straight into the computer. What did I say? I'm sorry, city clerk? I said, I'm sorry, circuit clerk's office, Mr. Rook's office, so they can go straight into the computer, and there won't be any delay going in. And absentee ballots will be ready by Friday, May the 10th, okay? So we will also post this on our website for that information, so. Alderman.
Can we get this put on the left side as well?
That's what I was talking about. Ask Joel. Yes, Joel.
And will we be open on Saturdays till noon, just like the typical elections, the two Saturdays preceding?
Two Saturdays prior from 8:00 to noon.
Thank you. And I've got a couple other items.
Okay, Alderman Little, was that?
It's related to these.
Okay, all right, hang on just a second. Did anyone else have any question? Okay, Mr. Latimer.
Just to recap, Board, to make sure we have a clean record. So what we're going to do is we're going to add May 30th to the agenda item under 9A, Mayor's Business. And then the order that I circulated this afternoon is also here at the table. We'll have the May 30th date for calling for the special election to fill the Ward Five vacancy. Likewise, we will add the words "May 30th of 2019" to Board Business, item A. So it will be consideration of a resolution calling for a special election on May 30th, 2019. And that May 30th, 2019 date will also be inserted into the resolution that is in the board packets.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. All right, Alderman Little, you had some changes?
Under Board Business, since we removed B, can we move that item up to make it item A under 9, beginning of the meeting?
Okay, so moving 10B up to, what, right after?
The first item under Mayor's Business.
Under Mayor's Business, okay. I certainly don't have any.
Financial consultants here, that can get them in and out.
Okay, I don't have any problem, have any problem. Do any objections to that? Any objections? Okay, seeing none, we'll move 10B up to 9 and make it the first item under Mayor's Business.
And under Department Business, the only item for the Fire Department, if someone has an objection, add that to consent.
Okay, do we have any objection to the promotional policy going on consent for the Fire Department, F1? Any objections? Okay, seeing none, we'll put that one on consent.
And that's it, Mayor.
Anything further? All right, anything further? All right, seeing none. I'm sorry, Alderman Walker.
I'd propose that we put item under Department Business, B to A, on consent, with the conditions as mentioned in the packet.
Okay, I have a recommendation that we, or a motion that we take at 11B to A and put in on consent with the recommendations from the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
May I be recognized?
Mr. Latimer.
It's not a public hearing, but it is an appeal which triggers a hearing from an administrative decision. And I know the applicants here. Mr. Pilkington, before this is put on consent, which means the public hearing won't go forward, are you agreeable to the matter being on consent, which means it'll be approved as it stands right now with the decision of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals and those four conditions? Thank you.
All right, so we have that consent. Anyone have any problem with that going on consent? Okay, seeing none, with no further changes?
Mayor, what about under Mayor Business, number C, calling for the public hearing of the?
Oh, would you like to put that on consent, or you want to ask about?
Consent.
Okay, all right, do we have any objections to that one going on consent? That'll be under 9C. It's a public hearing on an ordinance for amending the Board of Adjustments and Appeals process. Okay, seeing none?
Should we explain that for public?
I'll be happy to do that, yes. This is an item that was attempted to do a couple of years ago, and we never completed the process. And so this is for us to go back and adjust. The Board of Adjustments and Appeals currently has a term limit of a year where you sit out. We've been having trouble finding people who would serve on that board. And so we want to amend the ordinance to allow for the person who is currently serving to hold over if we have no applications during the timeframe that says the application period. So that's what the intent is, and we will be having our first public hearing on that ordinance amendment at the next board meeting. So it'll come up again, so. Okay, anything further? All right, seeing none, then I need a motion to approve the official agenda with the amendments, or consent, and the consented items with the amendments as proposed.
So, Mayor.
A motion from Alderman Little, do I have a second? Second. Second from Alderman Walker, further discussion. All who are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I will now read the consented agenda items, and if I miss one, somebody quote me. Okay, under approval of Board of Alderman Minutes, we have consideration of the minutes of the March 29th, 2019, meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville. We have consideration of the minutes of the April 2nd, 2019, meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville. We have consideration of declaring a vacancy in Ward Five, Alderman position of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, and calling for a special election to be held on May 30th, 2019, to fill the vacancy pursuant to Mississippi Code annotated 2315857. B is Engineering Services Proposal from Neil Schaefer for rubbish site permit modification for buffer expansion. Under C, it is consideration to call for a public hearing on ordinance 2007-06, City of Starkville Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 6, Section 2-164, amending the Board of Adjustments and Appeals process to allow for reappointment of sitting board member if applications for positions remain unfilled after advertising period has expired. Under Board Business, we have consideration of a resolution calling for a special election on the issue of levying an additional 1% economic development tourism and convention tax for the purpose of improving the City of Starkville, Mississippi's parks and recreation facilities as authorized by 2019 Legislative House Bill 1565 to be held on May 30th, 2019. C is consideration of approval of a fair housing resolution and declare April as fair housing month for the City of Starkville's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, which will install a gravity-fed sewer collection system within the Roundhouse Road area. Under Department Business, Planning, AA19-01, request by Henry Pilkington for an administrative appeal from the decision of the building official in regards to the construction classification and applicable requirements for a building located at 805 University Drive in a T5 zoning district with the property number 101C-00-005.00, with the items as are outlined by the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, including all the conditions. Under City Clerk, we have consideration of acceptance of the March financial statements. Under the Fire Department, we have request permission to update to allow the Starkville Fire Department the current promotional policy. The current policy has been in place since 2014, but does not include any college, educational, or additional points. Under Human Resources, we have number one, request authorization to advertise for a wastewater operator in the Starkville Utilities Department. Two is request authorization to advertise for a municipal court clerk in the Municipal Court Department. Three is request authorization to hire Noah Jones as an apprentice lineman in the Starkville Utilities Department. Four is request authorization to hire Chris Sewell as a part-time receptionist in the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. Five is request authorization to hire R.L. Rambus as a part-time custodian in the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. Six is request authorization to hire Ben Stroud as a civil engineer intern in the Engineering Department. Seven, consideration of Ability Works, Inc., Community-Based Work Experience Business Agreement Linking Innovative Networks of Community Service. Under IT, we have consideration of a dedicated Internet access agreement with BCI Mississippi Broadband LLC, DBA Max South. Two is request approval to donate five surplus Dell servers and related mounting gear to East Mississippi Community College Mayhew Campus Computer Networking Technology Program pursuant to Mississippi Code Section 21-17-1 sub 8. Under Parks, we have consideration of the contract with Pyro Shows for fireworks for the Fourth of July celebration. Sanitation, we have consideration to advertise for the purchase of one knuckle boom loader for the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Under Utilities, we have request authorization to implement the TVA Pole Attachment Regulation Amendment. Two is request authorization to advertise for bids for two 182430 MVA power transformers for Southwest Starkville Primary Substation material. Three is request approval of lowest and best quote from Lee's Precast Concrete Inc. for Phase Two of the approved Pleasant Acres Manhole Purchase in the amount of $9,101. Four is request approval to declare the Water Department's 1993 Ford F-250 as surplus property advertised for sale and sell to the highest bidder. Five, request authorization for Starkville Utilities to enter a lease and service agreement for a new Neopost postage machine with Memphis Communications Corporation, MCC, Mississippi. Six, last but not least, is request authorization to implement the Rate Change Classification Contract between Xerium, Wevex, and Starkville Utilities. And that concludes the consent agenda. Thank you, Mayor. My pleasure, thank you, Alderman. All right, next we have under Mayor's Comments, and I have a couple of things. I have a new employee to recognize. This is our new Director of Community Development, Dr. Sungman Kim, or also known as Simon. If you want to come up, Dr. Kim? He has been with us now a week and a day, I guess formally, but he went to work almost immediately. When we hired him, he started looking at our code and digging right in. So he has a total of 30 years of professional experience in community development. He's devoted 18 years to developments in the U.S., 12 years of experience formulated from foreign countries in South Korea and England. He holds a PhD in Landscape Architecture with a thesis in urban planning and design, two master's degrees in business administration and environmental psychology, and a bachelor's degree in landscape architecture. He's passionate about community planning and development and driven to deliver high-quality work. He loves to work in a team environment, achieve professional goals. Juggle projects provide positive solutions to the public and keep his fellow employees well-informed and equipped to do their jobs. Mostly, he wants to create a transparent and accountable work environment with team members who respect, trust, and have faith in each other, and I think that's lovely. So I can tell you the little bit that I have been in meetings with you, that you are achieving that very thing. So if you would like to say something to the board, you are welcome to do so.
Sure, thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Alderman. It's been about 10 days, maybe, less than 10 days, and I already met a lot of good staff members. They are knowledgeable and experienced, and I'm looking forward to working with them in the future to achieve a common goal and make the stock bill great. And it's been a really nice experience for the past weekend now, and I'm enjoying it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, welcome. All right, and the other thing that I get to do tonight is I get to recognize Mr. Todd Gale. He is the GM for Columbus Water and Light. He is coming to make a presentation, and before I recognize him, I'm going to read something because there are things that I didn't know that I'm going to share as it relates to what he's doing on our behalf. And this is, what is the, formerly, it's Lineman Appreciation Month, so. Every day, there are men and women who face extreme peril to bring us all the conveniences of modern living. They dangle dozens to hundreds of feet above the ground on precarious harnesses working between wires that, if improperly handled, can easily erase their lives in a massive jolt of electricity and simultaneously blackout entire sections of the city. Lineman Appreciation Day celebrates those men and women who put their lives at risk and keep the power on throughout our communities. Linemen have existed for as long as electricity has been part of modern living. Without them, there would be no electricity to our homes and our businesses that keep the lights on, the heating and cooling going, and ensuring that we have a TV to curl up to. Linemen are often called on to do their jobs in the most dangerous of conditions and facing the worst weather the world has to offer. We rarely lose power on a windless sunny day. Of course, even the best of conditions leaves them handling wires that carry thousands of volts of electricity and pushing thousands of amps. But when problems arise, these are the individuals responding to restoring power, setting up emergency systems, carry us through, and putting life back in order when the storms have finally passed. We are proud of our Starkville Utilities linemen and the work they do each day for our community as we maintain approximately 5,000 poles, 250 miles of line, and four substations serving almost 14,000 electric customers. I would like to recognize, and Terry, you're in the back there if you want to come up, I would like to recognize those who helped our other communities as they were trying to recover from the bad weather. We have Randall Criswell, Robbie Gilliland, Justin Hatcher, David Hatfield, A.J. Hollis, John Rogers, David Liel, Shasta Plunkett, Philip Quinn, Brad Scarborough, and Orlando Smith. And we thank you for being a part of that solution for our fellow community. So thank you very much for all of you. And Mr. Gale, are you back there still? Did I preempted you, did not?
No, that's okay.
I'll let you make a presentation.
Thank you for allowing me to come tonight.
Absolutely.
Being a board Alderman. On February 23rd, the City of Columbus was hit with an EF3 tornado. We lost, at that time, a little over 9,000 customers. Happened 5:00 in the afternoon on a Saturday. The next morning, at 8:00 AM, happy to announce that Starkville Utilities was there to help. Them, along with six other communities, allowed us to get those customers back on within a five-day period, and anybody that could take power by that Thursday was served. So I would like to thank you personally. This is the first time, won't be the last time. Hopefully, you don't see us in your community, but we're happy to help.
Thank you so much. Well, we appreciate it, and I know our guys appreciate the recognition.
Well, in my opinion, I'm partial, but every day should be Lineman Appreciation.
I understand why, I understand why.
So thank you.
Thank you so much. Are you going to give that to Mr. Kemp? That's great, thank you.
Mayor, we have Mr. Kemp to read it.
Oh, okay, sure, Mr. Kemp, would you?
Y'all wait a minute, gentlemen.
Sure, would you read the proclamation? That'd be great.
Yes. Get my glasses. To Starkville Utilities, in our time of need, you were there. On behalf of Columbus Light Water and the City of Columbus, we thank you for helping us during our recovery. With your assistance, we were able to restore utilities to 9,237 customers who were impacted by the storm on February 23rd, 2019. We have a long road ahead of us as we rebuild, but it is great to know that we have a neighboring partner in power who cares. Todd Gale, General Manager, Columbus Light Water.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, with that being said, that concludes my remarks. Do we have any board members? Alderman Little, I see your hand.
I've got a couple of things. First, I would like to thank Alderman Patrick Miller for his service to the city over the past couple of years, and prior to that, as he served on the Board of Adjustment, or Board of P&amp;Z Commission, I believe it was. I spoke to him earlier today and wished him the best, and I wanted to wish his family the best on his new endeavors going forward publicly, so. And next, I wanted to bring forward some photos from Saturday night, which we know, and I'll preface it, by Saturday night, we were very fortunate across the city to dodge what could have been a bad situation had that tornado touched down within the city limits. But I've got several folks in Country Club Estates have asked me to bring this forward. They've documented photos over the past couple of years, and it seems like with more construction, we've got more and more drainage issues going on over there. If you'll start there, Joel, I'm going to kind of give some, kind of say where they're at.
I do this well, Lisa. Thank you.
And I'll try to go quickly.
She's going, there you go, that's perfect.
The ones at night, the photos at night are going to be from this past Saturday night, which I know all over town, we just got inundated with rain, so that's not a common, hopefully it won't happen anytime in the near future. But this is looking west on Cypress Point Road, it's at the lower portion of it, and that's going to be from the home of Tommy and Terry News' home there, looking north, or west. This is going to be on Turnberry, looking directly at the home of Anna and Scott Dodd, across from Larry Tabor's house, who took the photo, and that home actually got water in it that evening. That's the front steps there, and that's where it was coming into the home. That's the corner of Royal Troon and Turnberry. That's where we just added about, I think it was a five-foot pipe, additional pipe there at that intersection, two additional inlets. It's been helping alleviate the problem up until Saturday night, which that hopefully will not happen anytime in the near future, but you can see it's halfway up the stop sign. That's, again, the Dodd home that got the water in it on Turnberry. That's Cypress Point Road. You can see that the streets aren't passable, and if someone was in need of emergency help in the back of the subdivision, there would just would have been no way to get to them that evening. This is going to be last Monday night, Monday evening. This is looking east on Cypress Point Road. The whole road was underwater, as was Pebble Beach, which was formerly a creek, and it did the underground pipe, and when the creek is at capacity, it is coming over the road. That's Cypress Point. That's the one, the photos in the daytime were the more common occurrences, and, you know, we've been getting, it's been unusually wet winter, the ground's saturated, and it's not helping us soaking that up. It's just something, I don't know how we addressed it, some have suggested, and I want to commend the mayor first. She was out there with me early Sunday morning and riding and looking. I wanted to show her the water lines in the folks' yards and driveways. We had a couple of cars that got water in them. Had there been cars parked on the streets, they would have all been flooded. And I also want to commend Assistant City Engineer Cody Burnett. He came out and rode with me on Monday and was taking notes and photos and trying to see what kind of alternatives we've got to help. Newer subdivisions like this should not, in my opinion, be, you know, having these issues. I'm excited to see that we're going with a stronger stormwater code, in the code rewrite. That can't get here soon enough, because, you know, no one should have to be worried about, should I go get flood insurance? You know, that might be the prudent thing to do until something can be done. I've also had someone mention, and it's engineers are going to follow up, that they believe possibly the creek that goes through the Country Club needs addressing and cleaning out. And of course, we'd have to get permission and look, see what funds are available, maybe to address it, and maybe even a retention area down there on the golf course. I don't know, something needs to be done to alleviate this problem, because as they build up Phase Three, it just seems like it's amplifying, and all this water's coming off the hill, and all the trees are gone. Anything that would slow it down, it's just coming faster and faster, and we can't build out any more subdivisions, in my opinion, without being sure that we don't have these type problems people are having to deal with, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman Little. All right, any other board comments? Alderman, go on.
When we get that type of rain, it's going to be all over the city, because I had people calling me all the time at night, but it wouldn't do no good to go look, because we've been there before. We've been there so many times before. Mayor, you've been there with me going down Carver Drive. It was flooded everywhere. It were coming from the, it were coming from Jail Keen Park, all that one, and you can go there and swim. You can go over on Jackson Street, down Cornell Street, same thing. The Buckners, they got flooded in, they got flooded out. The guy was over there Monday, drying that area out, that's on South Jackson. The guy was over there Monday drying that area out there on South Jackson and Glishpit. It gonna flood every time. The water is over the ditch that there. The water is over the ditch. So, that mean, where the water go? When you get that much water, our system can't take it. It's all around town. You come down, come down Marlo the King, it's the same right there in Family Dollar Store, it's the same thing. I mean, this is something we've been dealing with for years. I mean, I don't know what we can do. When it rain like that, that's Mother Nature. We can't change Mother Nature. Or you let she go in and change the pipes and inlets everywhere because a lot of the inlets are too small and they can't take it. So, I don't know what the solution, but when you find a solution, fix down South Montgomery, make sure you come on 25 and go down Glishpit and go all over the city when we do find a solution, Mayor.
No, I understand.
Well, I'd just like to follow up. Saturday night, I know, is, that's not something that we get, I think it was a little over five inches, something told me.
Oh, it was, yeah.
It just, in two hours timeframe. But the other instance that we're having is just, we're a routine thunderstorm. Those are the ones that I don't think should be happening. And when you get a tropical storm or a tornado event in the area, it's going to dump those amounts of rain, there's no way you can address that. But I think we can look to address, when it's happened every couple of months, something's not, wasn't done right on the get-go. I think the city may have approved something, and I've lost some confidence in engineers. No offense, Cody, but I've lost some confidence there that these engineers for the developers bring these projects forward. And it may not be all what it appears. I'm not an engineer, but I know when something doesn't work like they said it's going to work. And it's something that we're going to have to look a lot harder at when it comes, and I know I'm going to be. I'm not going to just rubber stamp it that comes. I want to be sure that stormwater is addressed, and I don't want to see anybody else have to go through that.
Well, and we have, we are looking at it with the code, and hopefully that will be a part of the go-forward that we have, and we're going to have to see how we address anything that's currently happening all over town. But you're right, I drove the streets on Sunday morning to see where water lines were and see where we had bundles of trash. For example, at the end of Carver Drive, there was a whole bunch of twigs and stuff that you know gathered from where the rain had, or the ditch had washed. So, we do have those things all over town. So, Alderman Vaughn. I'm sorry.
On the code rewrite, where are we on that?
Well, we, all right, hang on. Dr. Kemp, would you like to take your first opportunity to give us an idea of where we are on the code rewrite? Are you comfortable doing that, or would you like to punt that one?
Well, we'd said about five or six months ago, we're about five or six months out.
Well, and I think we're getting close. Dr. Kemp?
Yes, we are getting close. We are currently coordinating with other department to finalize it. We time-to-time find some of the missing puzzles, and we put it in right now. But probably next month or so, we should be able to show you some draft.
Okay.
Looking forward to that.
Sure, thank you. Thank you so much.
And I'm glad school didn't have to start at Overstreet because if school hadn't have started at Overstreet, they wouldn't have been able to get in there. I think it's somehow with some other construction, the development of the houses, any of the apartments that we're putting in, somewhere we're not getting good landscaping and making sure that we're taking this water a different direction because Overstreet floods every time, every time they see. Overstreet comes over to South Washington. And that's what floods South Washington because all that water banging from there, coming from there all the way down.
We will definitely be studying it. Thank you so much, Dr. Kemp. I appreciate that. Obviously, we had a rather strong event over the weekend, so those things will be things that we're going to have to take into consideration as we move forward. So, any further board comments?
Alderman Carver. I might use this opportunity now to talk about the upcoming election on the 1% used for the improvement of our parks, facilities, and cornerstone industrial baseball complex. I saw where Mr. Logan sent out an email, and I'm sitting here looking through it now, and it's a link to a website, which is VoteYesForStarkvilleParks.com. I was pretty pleased with that platform on the website, and just want to say, use this opportunity to say, I've already had people approach me, say, "Man, you're, you know, kind of conservative in nature, why are you pushing this for the park system?" And I'll tell you, from a taxation standpoint, I don't think it's a better opportunity, a better opportunity to further our parks for the fact that, you know, it's not a nucleus of 23,000 or 24,000 people that are going to be paying the taxation for this. It's anybody that comes to this town for a meal, for a Super Bulldog Weekend-type events, any Mississippi State athletic function, anything that they'll come and support. So, you know, from a tax sharing standpoint, it's one of those that utilize anybody that comes to this town. I think it's time. I think this website, reading through it, was brutally honest. It does have a progress report on it, which shows, and y'all have made some pretty incremental changes, but it also says, you know, there's areas of backing cages that need to be replaced further, and there's more fencing to be fixed, and places we can spray and things like that. So, I appreciate the honesty on that website, having read through it and whoever put that together, but it is time. I'll be supporting the 1%, I will be, I personally will be voting for the 1%, just having maybe a youth, a couple of youth coming through the system. I think it's time. I think that when you think of Starkville being a destination for the South, and that's, I mean, I see that when I travel, people want to get here, people want to move here, they're looking for a reason to move here, and maybe one of the things we can improve the most is our parks and, along with other issues we were just talking about from a drainage standpoint. But from an athletic standpoint, I think it is time. I'll get out and tell the board publicly whatever I can do to help y'all in your wards, come together in a united front. And another reason I'm voting for this is it's not, there is some confusion. People say, "Were y'all voting tonight?" Tonight, for the 1%, I said, "No, what we're calling for in the future is an election." Anytime you have a supermajority with 60% vote, I think that's fair for the public. I think it's a great opportunity. That's going to be a tough threshold, I think we all know that. I'm okay with the 60%. So, like I said, I'll be supporting that vote, and I'll probably get out and do some door-to-door walking and whatever I've got to do. If y'all want to sign me up to come in your wards and speak, and anything, we can likewise help each other. I know the mayor and a couple of Aldermen have already come to.
What's that website?
It's VoteYesForStarkvilleParks.com. Am I saying that right?
It's a Friends of the Park group that got together. So, what we were trying to do is get with the coaches so that if they're supportive, that they would be talking about it as well. Because 60% is a high threshold. So, if we want this to be successful, we're, the community has got to come together to make this important to all the community. And so, I think that's the message we need to get out, and I think it's important for the people who participate strongly to be a part of that. It has to be a community-wide effort. Alderman Vaughn.
Alderman Carver, I appreciate you bringing that up. I too will absolutely be supportive of that initiative to vote for the parks, the 1%. It is without question a huge opportunity for incremental economic development for our city, but more importantly, it's going to, it would open up the opportunity for every youth in our city to be able to have a first-class facility to play baseball and softball, but also open up the opportunity to have other parks in our community really serve more of that community-minded nature, such as McKee Park, having the opportunity to remove most of the organized team sports from there and opening up the opportunity for walking trails, another dog park, and other amenities that could serve the broader community. So, I agree with Alderman Carver. I'm going to be supporting this 100%. I think it's just good, smart business for the city, for the long-term growth of the city in terms of sales tax, in terms of supporting local businesses, in terms of restaurants and hotels. In the summertime, when we're a little slower around here, I think it's good, smart business for us. And so, I'm certainly going to be out supporting that and encourage all of you to get in for, to find out, there's a lot of this information, as there always is in any major event, to find out what the facts are, what the money can be used for, what it will be used for, and how this can really be a positive impact for the city moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Sisner.
And I want to echo both of these Aldermen's comments, and it's easy to get distracted by that shiny new thing, the cornerstone park, the baseball complex, but it's important to note that this plan actually addresses each of our parks throughout the city and hopefully will provide us more opportunities, places for our kids to go, things for them to do that are not currently available to them. Gary's done a great job of identifying what the needs are in different parks, and we've put together a plan, we, that's the royal we. Gary has put together a plan for how he's going to address some of those needs, and this is an incredible opportunity for us to have that bright, shiny new park, but also to make big strides in our current parks and providing opportunities for kids throughout the town to have a better park system.
Thank you. No further board comments? All right. Well, let me say this on the heels of those, that one of the things we're going to be trying to do, I know that Ryan Phillips of the Starkville Daily News is going to work to hold a public forum, so we will have the opportunity to be available to talk to any of the public that wants to come out and discuss this and have more information about it. There'll be, I think, lots of opportunities. I certainly am going to be out at every opportunity. I'm going to, you know, sleep, eat, breathe this for the next 45 days because that is what we have, and that's the time we have available to us to get this 60% of the community support who will then get out and vote and make this happen. So, I want to do my, everything I could possibly do to support this and make this a reality for us because I think it's extremely important for our children and for the future of our community. So, having said that, if there are no further remarks, then we will go to citizens' comments. Citizens' comments is the opportunity for anyone to have three minutes, and we do time it, so that you can say to the board whatever you would like to say, make whatever points you want. This is not normally a time when we will comment back, so it is a one-way flow of information at this point in time unless the board chooses otherwise. So, Mr. Turner.
I'm Greenington Mayor, Board. My name is Avon Turner Ward. Seven, to all my sisters and brothers. Saturday was a wake-up call, and a warning. Some things that have happened, happening, he just wanted to give us a wake-up call. When I heard that it was coming, Madison, Maven, Manti, that ain't far from us, but that's a wake-up call. And if we don't start doing better, and thank goodness that the sirens work. But that was a wake-up call, warning, that we got to do better. And on Main Street between Reed's and Reed's Bank, we had water running down the sidewalk, and we don't know where it coming from, but they wanted me to mention.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Any other citizen comments?
Yes, ma'am. Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Board members? What wasn't said? Now, since this special election, does the person run as a Democrat or Republican or as an independent?
It'll be independent.
It'll be an independent. With that said, I'm going to give y'all two chances to reach the public, also for the 1%. Monday, the Democratic Party is having a fundraiser, and that's at 16th Section Church. So, come on out, they need you. You can present everything there, and if a person running as an independent, they can come on out. And on this very important, May the 4th, mark your calendar, NAACP banquet, it can be at the parks, Starkville Parks, Travis Outlaw Center. Come on out. We need you. Now, you can reach the community on all three, because there's a special election coming up. Remember, the family members and friends can be there, and that's who you want to reach. So, buy your tickets, see me for any ticket you need. Thank you.
Did you say it's coming Monday on the 16th Section Church?
Yes, sir, at that big event hall.
I mean, this next Monday?
Not the church, this Monday.
Okay.
What time is it, Ms. Drapula?
Twenty-second?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Oh, yeah, the speaker is our Honorable Retired Ex-Representative Tyrone Ellis. So, come on out. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else wishing to speak? I think we've got several approaching, so we all just going to have to form a line.
I'm going to be real, sir. Anything, Mayor?
Say your name. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Linda Bonner. I'm from the Rock Hill community.
Yes, ma'am.
I got just three things. The transit system, I'm a friend of Dorothy Isaac. I've been helping with her for years since her amputation, and we've contacted the transit system about getting rides to doctor visits and that sort. One time, they told us she had to wait, called two weeks ahead of time. The next time she called, they said they needed 24 hours. Well, that's kind of hard because you don't know exactly what you're going to get. I've been taking her back and forth. I've had to, once she gets into my vehicles, I have to lift that wheelchair. That wheelchair is not light, and I just want her to get some assistance. I talked to Mr. Dumas on the phone yesterday. He said, told me that the transit buses have schedules. But my thing is, they run 24/7, that's what he said, but if you drop off one person, you are coming to route to pick up someone. She stays at 89 Natchez Street. And my thing is, he kept saying, all the buses have a route. What I want to know, like I told him, I've seen buses up and down Highway 12, all over Starkville apartment complexes with nobody on them. They be at Kroger, they be at Walmart, they be at Vals, they come to the hospital one after another. Nobody on them, nobody gets off, nobody gets on. And all I'm trying to do is get her some help. So, that's all I have to say about that. Okay. Number two, he was talking about the flooding on South Montgomery. I live in the Rock Hill community. My sister lives in the city limit of Rock Hill, right before the Old City Dome. Right down on Rock Hill Road, I called the young, the city administrator, they dug out the ditch. It floods right in my sister's yard. The reason it floods, one of the covets is higher than the ditch. He dug it out, but the cupboard is higher than the ditch, therefore, the water won't go up, not that high. It bags back down. So, with Saturday thing, but this is not just a Saturday thing, water is in that, it bags up almost to my second sister's double-wide trailer. That's just how much water, and that's just on a normal, that's not just Saturday.
You're coming up, closing in on your time. You've got 15 seconds.
Okay, 15 seconds. Third one is, I'm going to go back to my notes. The sirens that used to be in Rock Hill community is no longer there. It used to be where the Habitat for Humanity's building, that tower right there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Patty Drapula. I live in Ward 3. This comment concerns the special election. My understanding from the Circuit Clerk's office is that the city's going to need to address the changes in the polling precincts that the county made. For example, in the county, you no longer vote at the fire station on Garrett Road, you go vote at Trinity Presbyterian Church. And I think you all, maybe the Honorable Attorney can speak to this matter, will need to address those changes because what happens in the county doesn't necessarily pertain to the city. If I'm wrong, I apologize, but that's what the Circuit Clerk's office told me. So, that's something, when you're talking about the special election, you'll need to look into the change in voting precincts.
May I remember a response to that?
Were you done, Ms. Drapula?
Sure.
Okay.
No, I just want to respond.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Turner, I think, Mayor, if I may just have this moment of indulgence here.
Yes, sir.
I think probably the best approach to do that, for the attorney just to look into that, and, Mayor, you know, you're here on a day-to-day basis, I think he's advised you, and we can proceed from there.
Yes, sir. We'll certainly identify those polling locations. Be happy to. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Drapula. Hey, anyone else?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sam Califer, and I live in Ward 5.
Mr. Califer, would you spell your last name?
Yes, it's K.E.A.L.H.O.F.E.R. Me and some of my colleagues are here. We wanted to raise awareness about an event that we're hosting on May 1st, and we've got a few people talking, so I just want to introduce the topic and how we came to do this. So, there's a special topics class being offered at the university called Food and Identity in the and Literature, which focuses on, you know, the way food is presented in literature and what, you know, stories and histories are tied up in those foods. And as part of this, we want to host an event, it'll be a dinner, where we talk about the research that we've done, and it's also a charity. And it's open to everyone, we definitely want people at the university to come, but it's also open to the community as a whole. And I sort of just want to talk about that class. So it investigates literature through an investigative lens of food, and it asks questions, you know, like cultural questions that are tied up in food, like, things like food justice and culinary justice. And as a student of literature, I've learned a lot in this class, I'm surprised by how often food is mentioned in literature, you know, how often fictitious characters are eating. And I think authors do that on purpose because they, that's like a piece of evidence that food does have more to offer than just like the physical substance that you get from it. So we've all done different research regarding food and histories that we're gonna talk about, and we would love everyone to come there. Just as a teaser, I'm gonna be talking about sweet tea, and whether you were born in sweet tea or not, you know, everyone knows this like weird mythical status that sweet tea has in the South. And my research is sort of looking into where that narrative came from and what other histories are tied up in sweet tea. And if you're interested in that, then you'll just have to come. And I have other colleagues who are gonna give you specifics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Charlotte McBride, I live in Ward Three. Like Sam said, we're here tonight to talk about the Starfall Table of Culinary Justice that my class is hosting. So I just want to give you specifics about it. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. So the title is Investigating the Southern Plate. So we're gonna be talking about the foods that you have on your plate, we're all gonna get up there and talk about the foods and kind of the history and the background of what makes up the Southern Plate. It is Wednesday, May first, at seven PM at the Little Dewey. We'll have it in the Fellowship Place, which is his venue, classy venue, and the Little Dewey will provide food. Tickets are fifty dollars, and they include a signature alcoholic drink called the Mississippi Front Porch, a four-course meal where all of us will present, and then a special gift as well. All proceeds from the ticket sales will go to the Mississippi Food Network, which is an affiliate of Feeding America, and they feed hungry Mississippians, which with the recent storms, I think this is a great time to get out there and support Mississippi Food Network. And kind of like the title of the event says, it's the Starfall Table of Culinary Justice. So we really want the community to get involved. It's not just a thing for the college, it's for all the community. So I would ask that y'all like advertise or, you know, word of mouth, just kind of get this out to everybody, and that y'all would buy tickets. You can buy tickets online at EventBrite.com, which is EventBrite, B-R-I-T-E dot com, and you can search culinary justice in Starfall, Mississippi, and the event should pop up. I'm also on Twitter at Grad underscore Charlotte, and I've also retweeted and tweeted the event there, so you can go there to find that.
Great thing. Would you say your name again, please, ma'am?
Charlotte McBride.
Charlotte McBride.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. McBride.
Hi, I'm the Vice Mayor from the Board. My name is Catherine Bowman, I'm from Ward Three, and I'm also coming to speak about the event. I want to specifically speak about the issue that we hope to sort of benefit and contribute to. So according to the Mississippi Food Network, one in four Mississippians don't have enough to eat, and one in four children in Mississippi go to bed hungry every night. And according to Move for Hunger, Mississippi is the hungriest state in the nation, and this disproportionately affects African-Americans. Sixty-one percent of SNAP recipients are African-Americans, and half of the counties that are considered food deserts have a forty percent or higher population of African-Americans, three of those counties being sixty and seventy percent African-Americans. This is not justice. The Starfall Round Table hopes to shed light on the living but often forgotten narratives that influence our food. We also hope to raise money towards solving hunger in Mississippi. When the people who created and influenced our Southern Plate have enough healthy food to eat, then culinary justice will be served. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. All right, do we have anyone else?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board, my name is John Tolliver, Ward Six. Of course, you know, we've been out of our home for seven months. I was supposed to go to Israel, I had the money for that, but we had to take that money to try to get some stuff done that the city didn't get done. My daughters were supposed to come back Sunday night from Disney World in Florida with the rest of the band, but they couldn't go because that money that I had, we had to put it in the house because nothing has been done. I'm also interested in what's going on with Pecan Acres. There are gonna be people who are in Pecan Acres that can go around the corner to the drugstore, or can go down to CVS, or can go to the grocery store, and they're gonna be moved from that place where it's a local place so that somebody with a lot of money can come in and get that area because it's nice and it's close to everything, and gonna be put on eighty-two. Do I think that the citizens of Pecan Acres need a better place? Yes, I do, but I think they're being a promising elevator and gonna get the shaft on it. And as far as this all, I'm not gonna vote to increase my taxes. I'm not gonna do it. I do it, I do understand that there are parks here, and I do understand that they need work, but I don't believe that that's the most important thing when we got infrastructure, when you have people who, houses are flooded in the front, in new subdivisions, or old subdivisions. On West Main, you got water flooding. I don't think that park, that twenty-four million dollar park is the big issue. Alderman Haller said, people want a reason to come here. We need to be the city to give them a reason to stay here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tolliver. Do we have anyone else?
Good evening. Good evening, Vice Mayor, Board of Alderman. I'm just here adding on to Mr. Taylor's remarks, speaking about the NAACP banquet. He did not name the speaker. We're gonna have our National President come to speak for us, Mr. Derek Johnson, so we hope you guys all attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hack. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close it as citizen comments, and we will move to public appearances. We have one public appearance this evening, of Mrs. Candace Williams. Ms. Williams? Good afternoon.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Alderman. My name is Candace Williams, and I am a full-time caregiver. I take care of my parents full-time. My mother was diagnosed with Alzheimer's ten years ago. As a matter of fact, she's a retired schoolteacher, and so is my dad. Some of you may know him. My mother's name is Helen Williams, and my dad was a third-grade teacher, Mr. Bobby Williams, at Overstreet Elementary School. My mother was diagnosed with Alzheimer's almost ten years ago. I sacrificed my life to be a caregiver for her because she is my heart, and I do believe in honor. On June the twenty-second, we'll be doing the Longest Day to Honor Caregivers, and also those who have had Alzheimer's, and those who have passed with Alzheimer's. I am standing here today as an advocate because that has become my passion, to be a heart and to be there for those who are caring for people, caring for those even beyond Alzheimer's, but just to be there for people who have gone and fought this, is fighting this horrible disease. Presently, my mom is in stage seven, which is the last stage. We don't know the day nor the hour, but we do know that she will be going on soon to be with the Lord. However, I know that she is proud of me today because it took a lot of me to not make the phone call to the city clerk to say that I don't want to do this. It took a lot out of me to say, I might as well just forget it. That's not the type of person my mother is, or my daddy. They're both fighters, and I believe in fighting for what's right, and I will stand with them, I will fight with them, and I'll be with them until the end. However, I'm here today to make a stand and also ask for the Longest Day to be made permanent here in this city because we do have breast cancer days, we have other special days. It's time that we make a stand for those who have Alzheimer's and those caregivers. Presently, we are planning the Longest Day, and we want to thank the city for allowing us to get the building, the Starfall Sportsplex, at no charge, which is a blessing because, of course, where will we get the money from? So we're grateful for that. Also, we are grateful that you guys have said, and hopefully that you all can come out on June the twenty-second and help support us on the Longest Day. If you all will, please consider making this day permanent, just for Alzheimer's and those who are battling with this disease. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Mayor, were we already celebrating the day for Alzheimer's?
The Alzheimer's Association, I believe, has a walk. I'm not sure that it has been scheduled yet for this year. It's usually in September, October, I think, but...
They're not having one this fall, but this year, someone doing the Longest Day.
Oh, okay. I see, okay, all right, well, thank you for clearing that up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving along, our next item is gonna be Item 10B that has been moved to the next item on the agenda, which is consideration of a resolution of the Mayor and Board of Alderman for the City of Starfall acknowledging and approving the sale and award of combined water and sewer system revenue bond, Series 2019, of the municipality in the principal amount of ten million dollars and for related purposes.
May I move approval?
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Alderman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second one from Alderman Vaughn, discussion? Any discussion? All right, Alderman Sistrum?
I'd just like to say that they reviewed the bids, the bond information today, and we have a terrific interest rate. It's a tad below three percent, and could not be happier that we can move forward with this project.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kemp, since we have taken it off consent, would you come forward and give us just a really very brief what it's being used for, please? Combined water and sewer is one thing, but that doesn't really give a little bit of a detailed picture, so, if you would be so kind.
Yes, ma'am, Vice Mayor, Board. These bonds will actually be used primarily for the solid waste project that was underway at our wastewater treatment plant. As we've discussed, our lagoon is at capacity. We're bringing on a sustainable process that will have great impact, not only in the near future but long-term, and so the majority of that will be used for that particular process that essentially will treat the sludge and turn it into reusable product, dirt, going forward. We also have some upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant itself, and those funds will also be used for that, so that's what primarily it's for.
Thank you, I appreciate you doing that because to me, this is one of those things where we are taking care of things that need to be taken care of, that over the years have accumulated, and we're now doing it in such a way that the product, the lagoon, and the work that we've been doing is not something that's going to be repeated, in the sense that that lagoon is a sustainable answer, and the machinery, the equipment, all of that is a sustainable answer to our long-term future.
That's exactly right. What we're trying to do is fix it, come up with a solution that will have long-term impact, not just delaying the decision down the road.
Right, I think this is equally as important as our infrastructure replacements in Pleasant Acres. I think this is absolutely one of those things that the Board should be very proud that they have been supportive of as we move along. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. I didn't mean to take you for very long, but I did think it deserves some highlighting, so, all right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Have a vote, oh goodness, I might have to count again. Vote of five to one, and the motion carries. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is, let's see, we've considered a number of things. Let me flip a page. Next item on the agenda is the claims docket. Do I have a motion for the claims docket?
May I move approval?
I have a motion from Alderman Sistrum, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Littler. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, by vote of four to two, motion carries. And that actually concludes, I didn't, oh no, wait a minute, I've got, I'm sorry, I forgot the youth baseball, my apologies. Under Parks, we have consideration of approval of twenty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars for youth baseball uniforms from Rex Team Sports, lowest and best quote. Mr. Logan, would you come, give a little bit of detail on that particular figure and why we're seeing it?
Yes, this is the first time we've run the youth baseball program. This fee would have been previously paid by Starfall Baseball Association, and it's covered under registration fees, so people pay, you know, to play baseball, they pay their fifty dollars or sixty dollars, whatever it is, and this, basically this money's covered through that, so it's covered through registration fees.
Okay.
May I be recognized, Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Logan, this is the first year that the city has done this. This amount of twenty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars, I understand from your cover sheet, is to cover the seven-hundred-and-fourteen participants?
Correct.
And that is a ten percent increase from last year. You mentioned that the cost is gonna be deflated by the registration, and just kind of elaborate on that, I'm just trying to see what cost the city's gonna incur from this since our first time doing it.
Sure, so while this is a new expense, we also have new revenue. So that seven-hundred-plus players for baseball, each player pays a certain amount to play, it differs. We got fifty dollars for the three and four-year-olds, starts smart baseball, and then different fees for the older kids, and that's all factored into, basically each sport has its own individual budget that we keep up with, not something that, you know, on city ledger, but our individual budget, we factor in sponsorships, individual team sponsorships, and things like that. So those registration fees are meant to cover the majority, and then we also have the sponsorships that help complement and cover all those costs.
Given your thorough meticulous analysis and study of these issues, what do you project to be the expense against the general fund of city revenues after you collect the fees from the enrollment and any other fees you get from the participants? Since this is the first year, I'm just trying to get a handle on it, so next year, I want to be consistent with this.
We have estimated revenue, I don't, yeah, I'm slipping my mind a little bit on our exact fees for older baseball, but for youth baseball, for three- to four-year-olds, it's fifty bucks per player, and times seven-hundred is thirty-five thousand dollars, and that would just be a very, very basic estimate of revenue, but it's a lot more than that, very, very conservative. So we have a lot of revenue to cover this amount.
So my last question on this line of questioning is, so it is your opinion and recommendation as department head that, once the Board approves this recommended expenditure for twenty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars, that in applying the cost-benefit analysis, that the city should come up with additional revenue beyond this projected and approved expenditure? I'm asking you the question now, here.
Yes, I believe the answer to your question is yes. So we have revenue to cover this and then some plus additional revenue from sponsorship.
Okay, very good. And the only reason the Vice Mayor asks you this question, I'm not just trying to highlight anything about your department, I just want to answer those questions. So you do a very good job, and I just want to make sure, Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
While I got you, Gary, I was gonna say...
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, I was gonna say, and Rex is still affiliated with the old sports center, and that is, we are shopping local, right, with his contract?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything further?
Mayor, let me ask one question, I'm sorry, it's the Vice Mayor, just one for you. I read something about some lifeguards or something, elaborate on that, Mr.? Again, you know, we get a lot of materials from you, and I like to be very well informed, and I like that, and I just want to have a superior knowledge base, so as I move forward. Yes, sir.
Sure, so currently on the city's website, we are advertising to hire up to thirty seasonal lifeguards, that's a previously approved position. So normally, in years past, it wasn't necessarily a seasonal position, that's done differently. This year was previously, you know, hired as ten-nine-nine, so we're taking this on as a season. on as a seasonal position, and the reason that we request to hire 30, we, in, in years past, we haven't, actually haven't quite hired that many, but fairly close. We usually hire in the 20 to 22 total range for lifeguards, however, what inevitably happens, what we've seen the last couple of years of me running it, is we, we lose some. After July 4th, some just never come back, so we, we are anticipating hiring up to 30. We may not exactly hit that number, but we are advertising right now to, to hire for those lifeguards to cover for the pool this summer.
Last thing now, so we hired the 30 now and we, in the past, have been hiring 22 or 23, so I'm sure with your leadership, you'll make sure that if we need to get back to the 22 or 23, we'll save that money, can utilize it in other areas of your department.
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor, you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, anything further? I need a, I need a motion for...
Move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrunk, further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that does take us to the closed determination session to determine the need to go into executive session. If we would, please, if you could clear the room and allow us to do that, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Move.
Of a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrunk, motion from Alderman Little, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you, if you would, we're going to go into...